No, I can't. He's here. Good evening. This is a regular scheduled meeting in the Hartford City Council for Tuesday, October 8th. I'll call the meeting to order. Prior to this, all scheduled, prior to this, all notices were sent out to the public. Please join us and we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call. Shanna?
All alderpersons are present with Alder Person Phillip appearing via Zoom and the mayor is absent and excused.
Okay, thank you. Item four unanimous consent agenda. I will look for emotion.
Move to approve.
Second by Alder Person Turchi. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item five communications discussion consideration of canceling the second common council meeting in December of this year. This is Christmas week, right Steve? Shanna?
Yes.
Okay.
So yeah, this is a typical.
Anybody object to that?
Yeah, typical request.
All right. Any discussion on this?
Move to approve.
By Joe. Is there a second? Alder Person Curly. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item appearances citizen comments. Police Chief McFarlane, would you please introduce our new police officer?
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Officer Steve Shinaki. Officer Shinaki was originally born in Milwaukee and moved to Stanley, Wisconsin at a young age where he grew up. His mother was a correctional officer and inspired him to be a leader in his community. He was very active in football and wrestling and gained many honors in both. After high school, he was accepted to UW Marathon County and later transferred to UW Stevens Point. He both coached and wrestled at the college level. He also worked at the Clark County Sheriff's Office as a deputy while attending University of Wisconsin Stevens Point and graduating with a bachelor's degree. Throughout his college career, he was very involved in wrestling, both coaching and wrestling. After graduation, he moved to Northern Wisconsin where he worked for Price County Sheriff's Office as a full-time deputy for approximately three years. When he met his wife Lauren, a Puywaki native, he moved to the area and worked at Cedarburg Police Department and became a K-9 officer, where he was paired with K-9 Ranger and received many awards and honors with the K-9 unit. And if anybody was at National Night Out, you probably had an opportunity to meet with Ranger because he was there that night. He resides in West Bend with his wife, two-year-old daughter, and three dogs. In his free time, he is on his ski boat enjoying water sports, barefooting, with family and friends. Once fall hits, however, he's in the woods or on the water hunting every chance he gets. During his lifetime, he has always found himself in a leadership role and loves serving the communities he lives and works in, and he's looking forward to seeing what his career here at HPD brings him and looks forward to serving this great community. City Clerk Shanna will now swear in. Officer Shinaki.
May I just raise my right hand and give you after me? Aye, state your name, to solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution, and laws of the State of Wisconsin, the Charter of Laws and Ordinances, of the City of Hartford, the Rules and Regulations of the Hartford Police Department, and the Law Enforcement Code Of Ethics.
And the Law Enforcement Code Of Ethics.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of my office as law enforcement officer to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So I'll be done.
So I'll be done.
All right. There you go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Stephen.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. All right, congratulations Officer Shinaki. Now, under public comment, any public comment? Any public comment? Please introduce yourself, give your address, and as the mayor would say, you have three glorious minutes, but I'm not going to say that. Take four or five if you want, Don.
I am Don Bondas and I am here representing the Wisconsin Automotive Museum located at 147 North Rural Street. And this is regarding ordinance number 1496 and the proposed change to the street use permits and how it will affect the parking lot that is located outside the museum. Some of you might remember, but in a little bit of backstory, in 1998, the museum sold the five acres that the rec center and that parking lot are on to the City of Hartford for $1. And at that time, there was a reciprocal easement agreement and right-of-reversion document that was signed by the mayor and it was registered at the county level. And the one provision in there that I'm looking at is, "City shall provide to Heritage, Hartford Heritage Incorporated, which is the nonprofit entity that the museum operates under, city shall provide to Heritage without charge 25 reserved parking stalls in the northeast corner of the parking lot. Such additional easement areas for museum use and/or truck or bus parking. The reserved parking spaces shall be designated as reserved for museum use only, and the city shall exercise good faith efforts to enforce such stalls as reserved for museum use." So yes, that's the part that I'm looking at, and when other large events or groups would potentially be using that, how is the museum going to be able to still make use of those 25 spots?
Thank you, Don. We cannot go into a discussion with you on this, but we'll be discussing this issue later. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Next item, mayor's report. I'm not the mayor, I'm just the acting mayor, so we're going to go to county update by County Supervisor Ken McCulick is with us.
Thank you, Councilman Resniak. I appreciate that. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ken McCulick and I reside at 805 Willow Lane here in Hartford. I'm also County Board Supervisor for District 10, which basically covers the southern half of the City of Hartford. I came before you all in June to make you aware of some funding from the county's election integrity resolution to cover costs related to offering extended in-person voting hours for our constituents. And following this, after collaborating with the mayor, our city administrator, and the city clerk, a schedule of early voting hours was developed and ultimately worked through. I want to take this opportunity to thank our city administrator, Steve Volker, and our city clerk, Shanna Crylecamp, for their diligence and hard work on this project in offering these extended early in-person voting hours, beginning on the opening day of the early voting period, which starts on Tuesday, October 22nd. At this point, I'd like to point, I'd like to observe that this schedule of extended voting hours for the city is posted front and center on the homepage of the City of Hartford's webpage. If you need to know that, it's www.cihartford.wi.gov, or you can just Google City of Hartford, remember Wisconsin, not Connecticut, and you'll get to the homepage. And if you're not aware, the city's website has been redesigned. It really looks good. I think it's a lot more intuitive. And the link to the hour is that I'm going to quickly pass along, is at the very top of this page, and you can't miss it. So if any of you haven't looked at the city's webpage, it looks great. And so, right at the top in a giant splasher is this document right here, which lists all of the early voting hours. So that begins two weeks from today. Some of the bullet points from that, on that first Tuesday and the Thursday of that week, the hours are 7:30 to 7:00 PM. So you have until 7:00 PM on those two days. On that Saturday, that first Saturday, 8:00 AM to 11:00. And then the following week, there's also two days, Tuesday, Thursday, that they're open until 7:00. Friday, open until 5:00. Saturday, again, that Saturday before the general election on the 5th, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. So anybody, you should, you know, go to the website, get that, you know, take that document, screenshot it, save it, you know, put it on your refrigerator, you know, get it, you know, get it on your board. And I want to implore everybody in the city to take advantage of these early voting opportunities. Look at the hours, make a plan to come to City Hall, vote in person, enjoy a great breakfast, if you do it in one of the mornings, a lunch or a dinner at one of our great nearby restaurants, a vote-and-dine, vote-and-shop, and make performing the most important of all your civic duties fun and enjoyable. And lastly, as I did when I came before you in June, I'd like to implore everybody here and everybody listening to take advantage of voting early in person. Like many of you, I have always voted on Election Day. That's just what we did. But we no longer have Election Day. We have Election Month. Those absentee ballots have already gone out. Two weeks starts that in-person, you know, early voting. And when early voting was instituted and legalized, I continued to vote on Election Day, but I've come to realize that this is misguided and that I need to change my perception of voting and when I vote. I'm going to say it again, vote early. Consider it a 15-day, you know, period, and why would you wait to the last 12 hours of a 15-day run to do something? You know, circumstances happen in life on any day that can get you off track. You can be late from work. You can have a family emergency. There's so many other extenuating circumstances. Weather can come into play. All the things that we can all think of that make you miss the 7:00 AM, the 7:00 PM window that you have on Election Day. Don't put all the pressure on that one day. Look at that schedule that's posted. Take advantage of that early voting period and do it before that Saturday. I think that's, you know, very important. The other thing I'll observe is that if you do that, there are, you know, there are organizations that are tracking that data. They obviously don't know who you voted for, but they do know that you did vote it. And so if you want to stop getting those annoying texts, if you want to stop getting the calls, if you want to stop getting the emails, if you want the, you know, the paper drive that basically shows up in your mailbox every day, if you want that, I can't tell you it's going to stop, but a lot of it's going to go away because once they know you have voted, the political organizations are, you know, they then, you know, they focus their resources on people they know have not voted yet, right? So if you do that, you can also help yourself by not having to deal with all of that. So that's all I had to report. And like I said, I wanted to thank Steve and Shanna for their hard work on that. It's, you know, a really great thing that we're doing for our, you know, for our citizens, and I appreciate, you know, the city staff taking care of that for us. So thank you, Steve. Thank you, Shanna. I did have a question, if I may, for Shanna. Are we going to have a Dropbox?
Yes, all the utility boxes are the drop boxes. That's being updated on the website. I have to update that tomorrow with Jack because it says right now we don't, but we do.
So the county's going to have a resolution tomorrow? So there's a meeting tomorrow that there will be funds available for surveillance, for cameras on those?
Yes.
So, you know, so you can take advantage of that. Oh, so you were aware of that?
All of our drop boxes have surveillance cameras on them.
Oh, nice. Okay, great. All right. So I just wanted to observe that. So I'm sorry, did any of you have, I'm sorry, did any of you have any questions?
We can't discuss anything during the public comments, so.
Do you have any questions?
No, nope.
Well, okay. Thanks for your time. You know, I appreciate it, appreciate, you know, everybody, get out there, vote early, right? Get it done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. He certainly went over three minutes, but I guess this is an important time of the year.
I had more than three minutes.
Huh? I timed you. You got six minutes. Don only got three, so. All right. Any other public comments for anyone? Any public comment?
This was the mayor's comment area, so.
Yeah?
This wasn't public comments, underneath the.
Well, that's true. Yeah, we're past that. Okay. Let's move right along. Aldermatic request. Alder Person Resniak, first thing I want to do is thank the Business Improvement District. They put on a pretty good show last Saturday. 710 runners and walkers got involved in the Pink Pumpkin Run. It was a big festival downtown, music and food and booths. It was just a terrific show that they put on, so hats off to the Business Improvement District. All right. Alder Person Regan?
I have one thing tonight as well. The Midmarine Minnesota Association Dinner Meeting was held on September 25th over at the.
Chandelier Ballroom.
Chandelier Ballroom, excuse me. And the featured speaker was Wisconsin Circuit Court Judge Brad Schimmel. Judge Schimmel is a former Wisconsin Attorney General and currently running for a seat on the Wisconsin State Supreme Court. Judge Schimmel discussed a lot of current issues concerning the state judicial system as well as sharing his reasons for running for State Supreme Court Justice. It was a very interesting evening and was very enjoyable and, again, hosted very, hosted very well by the chandelier.
Yes, it was. Thank you. Alder Person Curly?
A couple items. We're about a month away from the kickoff of the Hartford holiday season, and one of the things I've asked Steve for is an update on the status of the downtown building lights. So Steve, would you give us an update?
Yeah, so we have had some ongoing issues since the day they were put up. That continues to be an issue for us. We are working with our second company, install company right now, and maintenance company, as the first one closed. The second company kind of puts us in the schedule of when we can get around to it, we'll get around to it. So we send out emails, here's what's going on, and then about a couple of weeks later, we finally get an email back, let's, we can take a look at this week. There is a definite problem with the entire system. I have sent an email out right after, actually, at the same time that Dean and I were talking regarding having them come and give a presentation, either them or the company in which the product is manufactured by. They're out of, excuse me, Texas. The, but at this time, we do not have control over the lights. In other words, I couldn't program it right now. And even if I could program it, doesn't mean every light would work to what I programmed it for. So if you remember last Christmas, it was kind of a hodgepodge pick-a-building kind of thing, and sometimes they were a different color than the other buildings. So anyways, again, something to continue to look at and we'll continue to spend an awful lot of time trying to get this to where it's working. But they've, they've updated the programming, updated the software, and again, always continue to have problems, so.
Well, in that regard, Steve, I would like you to check with the Business Improvement District and see if there's any, or is there still some interest on their part for a downtown sound system? If there is, please help them identify some reputable vendors with proven track records in the successful specification and installation of a system to meet their needs using nationally-known system components, preferably American-made, with a technical support staff capable of resolving any issues which might arise. I know that at one time there was some talk of the bid district putting in a downtown sound system, and if that's still the case, maybe they would want to look into it. And if they do, I don't want another Elmer Fudd design system. So if you kind of keep an eye on them if they do want to go ahead with that.
I will.
Thank you.
Who's Elmer Fudd?
He is a cohort of Daffy Duck.
Alder Person Garza?
Just wanted to remind everyone that sun's going down sooner every day, five minutes or so, and it's getting dark, and those kids are still out and about, so just drive carefully and watch those crosswalks.
Alder Person Turchi?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Alder Person Webb?
Congratulations to our newest officer. And also just a plug for volunteers for Beautiful Hartford. They do a lot of great work around the city, and I think everybody should, if you have the money, consider donating to them so they can continue the really good work that they do all across the city.
Alder Person Kohler?
Yeah, I just too went to welcome the new officer into Hartford. I'm excited to have another young gentleman coming in and serving the community. Also wanted to tag on to yours, not only did they have the Pink Pumpkin Run, but the fire department opened up their house for an open house on Saturday. And then this weekend, it looks like the Chamber of Commerce is holding the art.
Harvest the arts.
Harvest the arts downtown. So as the slogan goes, there's a lot happening in Hartford, especially in October. So anxious to see you guys out there. Thanks.
Alder Person Savage?
Just want to say congratulations to the new officer and thank you for everyone who participated in Pink Pumpkin.
Thank you.
It's awesome.
And Alder Person Phillip, who's with us on the screen. Alder Person Phillip?
Welcome, Officer Stephen. I see nobody else tried it, your last name, so I won't either. Welcome aboard.
Good choice. We figured it out. It's Shinaki. Shinaki. All right. Moving right along. Standing Committee reports, Finance and Personnel, Item One, Discussion and Consideration Accepting the Code from Bobcat Plus for the Purchase Over Burlon SASP 60 Salt Spreader for $4,900. Randy?
Yes, staff is interested in a new Salter to be more efficient with their time and material. Staff had reached out to three dealers with Bobcat Plus coming in with a low bid. Bobcat Plus is the dealer we purchased our new Bobcat from earlier this year. We had auctioned off the old Bobcat when purchasing the new one, gaining a surplus of $17,500, and that's what we want to utilize to make this purchase.
Questions or comments for Randy? If not, I will look for a motion on this. Alder Person Webb? Second. Alder Person Regan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, Discussion and Consideration Approving Recommendation to Reallocate $9,000 Capital Outlay Funds Originally Budgeted for the Independence Park Shelter Roof Replacement to Painting the Roofs of the Willowbrook Park and the Westside Park Gazebo. Randy?
As part of the 24 operational budget, a $9,000 capital outlay project was budgeted to replace the roof on the Indy Medium Shelter with metal. The prices came back more than double what staff was expecting for that, so the staff would like to utilize those funds to paint the roofs at Willowbrook Medium Shelter and the Westside Park Gazebo. Those are both of our traditional red roofs you see in our park system, so we'd like to get those painted. And then as a side note, the Indy roof would be then put in as a capital project in a future year.
Questions? Comments?
No, just as I stated during the Personnel and Finance Committee, as well as within the Park and Rec Committee when it came across those, the roof on the Shelter is okay for another couple of years as we wait for the opportunity. So this was a good idea to utilize the funds in another way, so.
Sure. Any other comment?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Alder Person Webb, second by Alder Person Curly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item Three, Discussion and Consideration of Authorizing Appropriate City Officials into Letter of Agreement with WPPA Local 464, pending any legal language edits if necessary and approved by WPPA Local 464. Chief McFarlane?
Thank you. The Hartford Police Department has formed a peer support team. The purpose of this team is to offer support and guidance to our members and their families. I feel this is extremely important. It's something that we've been pushing for for a long time. As we all know, mental health issues are kind of on the forefront of everything we do, not just with the people that we work for, but the people that we work with as well. In this instance, the peer support team may be called out at times when they are not on duty, and to avoid additional costs of overtime while still providing this valuable resource to the staff, we work together on this agreement that allows flexibility for the peer support teams. The people that are part of these teams are specially trained by approved Department of Justice training, and there is even in the law a confidentiality that they have, almost like a doctor would have with people. So that's written into the state statute now. The, there is no cost here. If somebody were to come in off duty to help one of our staff members through a crisis, and they spent two hours at it, they would take two hours off on another day, but that two hours that they take off cannot cause overtime, so this is simply hours for hours. But it does allow them the flexibility to be able to do this program. So we will be looking for the authorization from appropriate city officials to enter into this letter of agreement with the Wisconsin Professional Police Association Local Number 464. Corp Counsel has looked at this, as well as myself and the union president. We both worked on this to bring it before both Finance and Personnel in this body. So we don't believe that there's any pending language edits at this time, but we'll do one more once over before we completely sign it. But we would be looking for approval for that. This does sunset, and on December 31st of 2025, which just happens to correspond with the end of our collective bargaining agreement with this particular union. At that time, we can determine whether or not we want to proceed forward and place this into the language of the next contract, or if we want to just completely sunset it for good.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Comments?
Need a motion?
I need a motion. And second by Tina. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Chief. Item Four, Discussion and Consideration of Approving the Revision to the City of Hartford's Purchasing Policy. Steve?
So in the purchasing policy, you have a copy of it in front of you on one of the pages, I believe it's page four of your purchasing policy. It discusses in a highlighted sentence that from now on, all the vendors in which the city does business with, primarily those who we do business with, with federal dollars or state dollars, again, will be checked with the federal business list to make sure that they have not been put on the list by federal government regarding non-use or not using those vendors. In the past, we did not, we're not aware that the list existed, but it was brought up at a recent single audit discussion. A single audit, again, is an audit that's done through the same auditing company that we use for our city audit, but this audit is specifically for a single item. In this situation, it was the use of our ARPA funds. And so, in 2022 and 2023, when we used those funds, again, we were audited for that, and they asked why we did not have this language a part of our purchasing policy. So again, going back to the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, it was asked, did we take the opportunity to take a list of all of our vendors that we currently use and also check them against that list? We did that and found none of our normally-used vendors are on that list. So again, it's just a practice that we'll be doing from now on out of the Finance Department. Every time that we have a bid that goes, comes back with a recommendation, the bidder, the low, the low-cost bidder will basically be checked against that list to make sure that they have not been put on that list for obvious reasons. So, any questions?
This will prevent us from having to deal with Elmer Fudd.
Oh, good.
How's that? Questions? Comments for Steve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alder Person Webb. Is there a second? Second by Alder Person Garza. Any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, Public Works Nothing Utility. Alder Person Turchi?
We have two items tonight. First item, Discussion and Consideration Approving a Rebuild of Some Pumps.
So we have three sludge pumps in our sludge storage building. One of them was replaced a number of years ago. The other two, they're 25 years old. We use them to mix sludge for our quarterly samples that are required by the DNR. We can rebuild both of them for $53,000, or they're $51,000 each, new. So we would like to just rebuild the two that we have, replace the seals in them, using Sabo Mechanical out of Fond du Lac.
You send those out or you rebuild them in-house?
We send them out.
You send them out.
They actually come, remove the pump, take it to their shop, rebuild it, and then reinstall it.
Oh, yeah. Sabo Mechanical does it?
Yep. Yep.
Questions, comments, anything?
Sounds good.
If not, back to you, Mayor.
Back to you, Dan.
Let's, I'll look for a motion on this.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Alder Person Regan and second by Alder Person Curly. Any further discussion? Not Alder, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, next item is Discussion and Consideration of Approving Quote for Clarifiers.
So under the 2024 Capital Improvement Program, we are reconditioning two of our 100-foot clarifiers, or I should say both of them because we only have two. We, do you have the pictures? We reconditioned the south one or started with the south one and.
We can see it.
Oh, you have it?
We can see it right in front.
So they take the dome off, the first picture, and then you can see the guy working on the collection tube. That's the part we have to replace. It's about 45 feet long. There's holes on the bottom of it and that arm sweeps around the bottom of this clarifier. When we did the south clarifier, they take the arm, take all the parts back to the shop, sandblast everything, repaint it, rebuild everything, put it back together. This arm was deteriorated pretty bad, but we were still able to reuse it. So we thought we would put it in for now and then start on the north clarifier. So that's where now the north clarifier, the arm or collection tube is too far deteriorated to reuse, along with some other parts. So we want to rebuild these parts out of stainless steel, make a second tube for the south clarifier, and we'll put everything in the north clarifier, get that up and running. And then in maybe two years, we'll do a drain the clarifier, do an inspection, and then we can replace that arm on the south clarifier at that time. But we'll have the part on hand. It's cheaper to make both of them now than it is one now and one later.
Sure.
So. And again, Sabo Mechanical would be, is doing this work, so.
Questions, comments, anything?
Just something that came up last night. You'd like to get into a routine of every other year, every three years of doing a preventive maintenance type.
Yep, these have been in service for 25 years and this is the first time it's been completely disassembled. So we'd like to get on a cycle. Every two years, we'll drain them, do an inspection, so we can have a better idea of what the future brings.
Anything else? Back to you for approval.
Okay, we will look for a motion on this.
Move to approve.
Motion by Alder Person Regan, second by Alder Person Garza. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. We forgot to introduce you. Dan Dintyce, our utility director. All right, Item 10, Resolution to Possible Action on Resolution Number 3697. Resolution Adopting the Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan 2024-2029 for the City of Hartford. Randy?
Yes, so we've been working on the corp plan with MSA over the last few months. The final draft was put in front of Parker Rec Commission earlier this month and they are passing along for recommendation of approval. As I said, staff has worked with MSA and here tonight virtually, we do have Morgan Shapiro, who's been leading this project for us. So Morgan was going to do a short presentation for us. Morgan, are you there?
Yeah, hi. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Good, good. Nice to meet you all. Yes, my name is Morgan. I'm with MSA. Thank you for the introduction. And yeah, I have a short presentation. I am gonna keep it brief if you'll allow me to share my screen. Perfect. Okay. So yeah, basically, we have been working for the last handful of months or so on updating the previous outdoor recreation plan, which was also worked on by MSA. And for those of you that might not be familiar, the purpose of an outdoor recreation plan, it's basically a five-year plan that allows the parks departments to be eligible for state and federal funding. It's a way to inventory park assets and look towards the next five years for kind of big goals, projects, and also get feedback from the community. So this is just an overview of what the contents of the plan are, pretty straightforward. And just some numbers on our public engagement. We did a community survey that got over 300 responses. We did two focus groups, one with Very Beautiful Hartford and one with some club directors for some of the youth leagues. We did one pop-up engagement event. The picture is from the event at Centennial Park. And then we had a meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission to present some of the contents of the plan, just to get some feedback before we brought the final draft to them. Some information that was discovered through this planning process, we, one of the things that we do is collect census data, look at the population projections from the Wisconsin DOA, and then also look at some national standards. And as you can see here, the current acreage of the City of Hartford is above the upper quartile for the national standards. And looking at the estimated population projections, it looks like there'll be a surplus of parkland acreage moving into 2040. And then here, we can see one of the maps we made, which is a 10-minute walk analysis. So this is all the residential areas that are within 10-minute walk of a park. And what this is really a testament to is the great and interconnected parks department. And you could see here that almost all of the municipal boundary is in the green, which is good. There's some gaps that you could see to the east and west, and that is probably due to the large state park on one side and then on the other side, looking to potentially incorporate some future parkland, but also kind of a lack of residential compared to the center. Looking at just some quick survey summary, we've asked lots of questions, but some responses, we would say they were mostly positive. Most of the respondents said that the current recreational programs are meeting the needs. Popular activities and facilities were picnic facilities, swimming, playground equipment. And then when asked what people were looking to have more of, more indoor athletic complexes, maybe a splash pad, additional restroom facilities are some of the top responses for potential, you know, future amenities. And then here we could see, maybe looking towards the future, potential future additional parkland, and that includes, near future would be extension hopefully of the Rubicon River Trail, and then looking at some of those parks parcels as potential future parklands. And I won't go through all of these, but this is just kind of the overview of the resulting recommendations. And these, to be clear, are high-level estimates that will be refined when the projects actually come up to be incorporated into the budget, but just looking at each park and trying to take an inventory of what potential improvements could happen in the next five years. And that is it. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Any question?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Where does pickleball fall into all of this?
Randy, I'll give that one to you.
And the reason I ask that question because, not that I want to get people scanning up and down on this document, on page 111 of the 158 wonderful pages that I read through on this document, you have responses that are rated in a certain percentages that tells the people, hey, you know what? What activities do I do as members of household? And then how do we rank those responses with what we actually currently already offer to our residents? And then how do we deem what's most necessary? Because they could add the response that says, this is what I like to do. But how are we looking at, obviously pickleball is the newest and latest kind of trend. How are we looking at trends to stay ahead of that as these surveys are five years old? We may slip what the latest and greatest is, or what's the new trend coming around the corner? It's a multi-question. I apologize for that, but I just want to kind of understand your perspective on that.
So I can start off.
Yeah, I'll let Randy start.
I'll start off with pickleball. Pickleball is addressed in the 2025 CIP with four courts scheduled to go in at West Side Park. We are currently fundraising for that. We have met and actually gone beyond our goal for Phase One, which would be the four courts and four net systems. We do have a Phase Two scheduled for 2027, which would be two additional courts and a seating area. But we're going to put on a push here at the end of the year to see if we can get all six courts done for next year. We would, again, need fundraising money and to see where we're at at the end of the year to revisit that thought. But that is one of our top priorities, is getting those pickleball courts up and running. Actually, I reached out to engineering late today with some thoughts and some ideas to get them assisting with us, and you should be able to see progress at West Side Park this winter as we would keep it in-house to do the excavating, similar to what staff did with the Independence Park parking lot. That was all in-house with park staff and assist from DPW. So we would look to do that again. We would have it laid out with the help of engineering, obviously before that happens. And again, that process is starting now.
Yeah, and I'll just touch on kind of the data, the data aspect of it. So when we get those surveys from the community and hearing about their appetite for potential future amenities, really what our recommendations kind of try and do is balance that community appetite with the, what is realistically accessible to the department, the Parks Department, in the next five years, whether that's, you know, financially, staff capacity, what are the current limitations? And as far as like looking at, you know, future trends, I would say, you know, pickleball is unique in the way that it's picked up with such strength. Although maybe, maybe it's not that, maybe it's not that unique. It's just, you know, what's coming our way quite often. But yeah, just, you know, it's always important to check the plan and continuously kind of update it with what you're hearing from the community.
Thank you. I don't have anything else. Associate Mayor, thanks.
I've got, I've got one question. Randy, when a tree dies in one of our parks, do you have any budget to have those removed or does the city crew, Street Department go out and bring it down? I'm just thinking of all those trees that died because of that, was it?
Ash.
Yeah, that mountain. Are there any trees left in any of the parks that have been, that are dead and still, they look like, they look like hell and I mean if.
Old ash board.
Yeah. If the, if those trees are still standing.
Most of the trees, we do still tend to, I want to say it's about three or four handful of trees. We have those treated, ash trees. Otherwise, as far as in the active portion of the park system, it's our responsibility to make sure we're keeping tabs on those trees, judge if they're immediate danger, if a tree is dying. Obviously, if it's immediate, we'll address that right away. If we feel it's not an imminent danger, we'll push that off to the end of the year. We like to do our tree trimming and tree removal during the wintertime frozen ground. Otherwise, I'm sure there are trees in our unkept natural areas. And again, as long as they're not bordering someone's property, and if they are bordering property, those property owners are usually pretty swift to let us know if there's a danger that's impeding on their property.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Alder Person Garza?
Going to make motion to approve.
Oh, okay. Any further discussion on this? If not, make your motion.
I'd like to make motion to approve.
Is there a second? Alder Person Kohler? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted just to thank Morgan and the MSA team. It does give us the plan to move forward. Remember when you guys start asking for things, it does cost, right? And, you know, with staff as well as some of the, some of the programs, so. But it gives us a good plan. The Parks and Rec Team went through this quite extensively over a couple of months, reading through it, with even the last couple, last couple second changes that Morgan picked up and got us a final copy right away. So again, I think it's great and it's a well-done, well-put-together, and it gives us a good option to move forward, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I think we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you so much. Have a good, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan.
Bye.
And we'll have an ordinances. First reading and possible action there on, number one, Ordnance Number 1496, Amending Section 725, Creating Sections 813, Amending Sections 22, Creating Sections 34014 of the Hartford Municipal Code Relating to Regulation of Alcohol and Special Events in the City. Our summary covered 1496 and 1497. Ian, are you taking this?
I am. So the original reason for these ordinances were some of the changes that happened when the legislature updated the alcohol code about, I think it was about a year ago now. The biggest change that affects us is they created, they updated how they regulate the retail, the retail sales by breweries, wineries, and distilleries. So people may be familiar with the past. You had like the mobile beer gardens that would set up in parks and stuff like that. That was under the brewery permits that were regulated by the state. They've kind of modified a lot of that language, so there is now the ability for kind of two categories of sales by producers. One is on-premise sales, which would be on, on the production premise. The city does not have direct licensing authority over that. We have zoning authority. We have other, you know, building type authority over where production facilities can go. But if there is a production facility and they fulfill the requirements of the state, they can have retail sales at that production facility. There's also the off-premise full-service retail outlets. Producers are able to have those based on the production levels they have. So one, two, or three, up to three total permits for off-premise retail sales. So you may be familiar with 1840 in West Bend. That is an off-premise retail outlet for 1840 Brewing Company. They have their production premise down in Milwaukee. They have their off-premise up in West Bend. So this regulates those, because they're new, they weren't under the previous code. The, one of the licenses or one of the permits you can have for those off-premise full-service retail outlets is essentially a mobile permit. So it's a permit that can be moved on a daily basis. That was the one that came before the council last meeting or the meeting before for Aspen Sky to serve at the Harvest Fest. So those mobile ones create interesting opportunities, but also regulatory issues for the city because we need to make sure that those, that they're serving the type of alcohol we want to allow. So in other words, they aren't serving hard liquor as part of a downtown event where it's wandering around the street. And so the first set of changes are kind of updating the different types of uses we have throughout the city, where you might have off-premise retail sales. So the one that Dawn had mentioned was the street use permits. This language is not new. We have street use permits. In reviewing it, it was pretty clear that it was originally intended for like block parties, so neighborhood block parties, not, you know, not downtown events. So one of the big changes I made in 7.25 was just kind of to update that for what it's actually being used for. We still have the block party language within there, but I've modified it to make it clear that it's usable for, you know, the Harvest Fest or Pink Pumpkin Run or any of those events. The other concern that's addressed by both this and by the Section 340.0147 is. forty point oh one four seven, uh, is we've had instances where, uh, like there was a, a group that set up kind of their own private little auto show, uh, in the rec center parking lot during the car show on Main Street. Um, and so we want to make sure, and, and we also have events that take place in the parking lots that were kind of in a gray area. So like, uh, the farmer's market, you used to have the night market, uh, in the library parking lot. There's other opportunities for, you know, different parking lots to be used for different events. Um, so this now covers those type of events with the street use permits so that they're regulated. Um, and so, I mean, to address Dawn's concern, we have not just that parking lot, we also have the parking lot, um, the, where, um, next to the cobblestone, uh, that we created when we tore the house down and, you know, that is partially owned by Tom Masters and partially owned by the city. We have an agreement regarding use. That agreement includes keeping it open for different, you know, users who helped pay for that, the mid district, the cobblestone and, and the mine shaft. So obviously these types of permits do not supersede those other agreements. If we had a circumstance where the rec center wanted to have an event that closed off the parking lot, or we had a request from some other user group to close off all of our portion of the parking lot, we would have to make sure that that parking is still available for, you know, the shower center slash auto museum.
Sure.
Um, I know we don't mark specifically reserved parking, you know, that has, you know, I, however that happened where it's not specifically marked as reserved for this user, I, I don't think that's ever been an issue and the intent of this was not we can close the parking lot. It was more intended to say somebody else can't close the parking lot without our permission. Um, so that's what seven point two-five is focused on. I also updated a few things that were, I mean, frankly, kind of not being followed like, you know, there was the provision for the, the proposed street uses primarily for private or, you know, commercial gain. Well, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and some of those are fall in that gray area. We, I made it explicit that it's like the business groups and stuff like that don't require council approval to override that. Um, we made it clear in all of these that the street use permits, the park permits include only beer and wine, uh, and none of the permits would include in sale of intoxicating liquor. We have a lot more authority over the permits that we're granting to use our property than we might, if there's a state regulated permit, there's different kind of authorities involved there. We have full, full police, you know, police authority over, uh, or home rule authority over our street use permits. Um, the next section is alcohol beverages, uh, in the parks. Um, the, it's a similar concern here, which is we don't want an event in the park, a private event in the park. Uh, you know, think, uh, the Buck Skinner's encampment to suddenly start serving beer without us having a way to regulate it, right? So this provides that your private, you know, graduation party, your birthday party or whatever event you have at a picturing shelter isn't covered by this, uh, other than the fact that the, the Parks Department can set regulations to say no glass and that type of stuff. Um, but if you have a private event with a park rental, you have to give us notice if you're going to serve alcohol to the public as part of that event. Um, with those full, full-service retail permits, I could see some type of beer fest coming up where everybody, you know, you have a bunch of different breweries set up stalls and it's like the, the, the food truck events, but only it's breweries. You don't have to, it's, it, it relieves a lot of the need to go through a picnic license to buy the beer and bring it into your festival. It gives a lot of flexibility to that, uh, if you do it correctly. Um, and then a couple of those provisions, we didn't have anything about alcohol in the parks. Um, so like eight point one-three per N one says you can't have alcohol on the playground and then it incorporates the thousand feet, uh, of a school building, which is state law. So, um, and we can, we can approve that with permission of the school, but you know, that in general, you can't violate state law just because you're in a park. Um, the other one that we have in here, uh, like I said, it's a state permit that we have, so we need to be able to regulate it outside of, uh, going to DOR and saying, hey, uh, this person is violating the rules, can you revoke their permit? We need to make sure we have ways to handle that ourselves. And in fact, DOR has acknowledged that they are going to be understaffed in this and don't have the manpower to necessarily have revocation hearings on, on everything. Um, so twenty-two point oh three, or twenty-two point oh two, three C expands what was already there for our nuisance provisions to allow us, if we have a on or off-premise, uh, production facility that's violating our rules, we can go after them as a public nuisance to shut them down that way. We can't revoke their permit necessarily, but we can get an injunction to shut them down as a nuisance. Uh, we also will be incorporating similar language in the zoning code as we redo that. That's another coming attraction, but I'm going to be updating that to say basically any production facility or, or off-premise retail is permitted as a zoning, permitted zoning use as long as it's operated in compliance with our alcohol chapter. So if you're violating that, we can revoke your zoning permit as well. Um, so that's another piece of this. Um, so that's the first ordinance. Um, I'll go into the second one because they kind of go hand in hand as well. Um, the second one is basically a restatement of chapter thirty-five. I started out trying to just adapt and include the new language, which is what we've been doing for the last like fifteen years whenever something changes and quickly realized that no, it needed to just be restated and reorganized. I didn't even give you a redlined copy because it would have been all read, uh, as I reorganized and cut out stuff and put it in different places. Um, so the big changes we have there, um, I streamlined the alcohol licenses and permits to make sure they were all correct and didn't duplicate things. Uh, I incorporated our quotas. Um, it's a pretty regular question that comes up of what's our quota? So to basically not have to answer that question every couple of years, we just put it in the code. So we know what our original class B licenses are and what our reserve licenses are as of now. Obviously reserved licenses can change as we add people, but we know what they are as of today. Um, fees, um, I added a late processing fee, um, just to make sure that if somebody is submitting their alcohol renewal license in like June first, when they were due, you know, May fifteenth or whatever, and we have to now expedite things that we have, there's a penalty for doing that. It's not just, oh, sorry, yeah, we'll get it done for you. It's, you know, there is some teeth to the deadlines. Um, operators licenses are basically the same. Um, I separately pulled from different ch- uh, different sections, the definition of premise to make sure what it is because premises are one of the biggest things we have to look at and make sure we monitor when we approve liquor licenses because that's where they can serve alcohol. So we now have a very specific ordinance that says what you need to include when you define your premise. Um, we include a very broad chunk about full-service retail outlets, um, to make sure that we can approve it. Uh, we can regulate them and approve them based on the same criteria as we would approve an alcohol license. Um, so there's on that Aspen Sky application, we had to sign off on it. We now can consider those under the same rules. How many are there? Where is it located? You know, is it necessary for the business? All of those same criteria that we would use for an alcohol license, we can apply to an off-premise permit. Um, we also include clerk approval, um, of those temporary ones like the Aspen Sky one. So just like the clerk can approve a picnic license, we're saying the clerk can approve a alcohol or a beer or wine temporary full-service retail, off-premise full-service retail outlet. So, so after this, the clerk's office could administratively approve that Aspen Sky permit, move forward with the event just like they do with a picnic license. Um, I don't think there's, there's, there weren't any significant changes to the temporary class B, uh, the license application. Um, we just tweaked the language to make sure that it's clear what the deadlines are and to remove some duplicate language. Um, license restrictions and regulations, I kind of combined some chap, some sections here and added a few things that, uh, were missing. Um, so the, the big ones we added were, uh, that, uh, it's a condition of any license that we can inspect as needed to, to, for compliance. You know, obviously it's not a harassment tool, but if you have a licensed establishment, we can enter to make it, to do our inspections. I don't think that's typically a problem with bars, but I wanted to make sure it was in there. Um, intoxic- intoxicated persons cannot sell alcohol beverages. That's no, that's no brainer. It's just in the code now. Um, online ordering and curbside pickup of alcohol beverages, um, has not been a major issue here. This is basically a hedge to say you can do online ordering, but you have to pick up inside. You cannot do curbside pickup. If there's ever a request for it, there's a whole like bunch of different rules and regulations you can put in place. It wasn't worth going down that rabbit hole unless we have a request for that. Um, and then the miscellaneous regulations are just pulled over from a, another chapter or section that was there. Um, the nude, the nude dancing provisions, um, for people not familiar, the primary way, uh, it's, it's more difficult to regulate, uh, nude dancing via zoning. Uh, there's several like cases in Milwaukee about with silk that they got sued and paid pretty heavy damages for zoning decisions. Uh, the way you, the way that it gets regulated most commonly is you say you can't serve alcohol. You, you can't serve alcohol and have nude dancing. So licensed establishment cannot have it or will revoke their license. This then applies those same provisions to on and off-premise, uh, retailers. We obviously can't revoke the license, but we can go after them as a nuisance or we could, you know, in the future revoke their zoning permit. Um, and for a on-premise, we could also cite them, you know, with ordinance violations, uh, ongoing, you know, da- daily violations if needed. Um, and then the only, the other one we added was thirty-five sixteen, which is just a general prohibition that doesn't just apply to licensed establishments. It would apply to, you know, anybody in the city says no person shall prevent or resist or interfere with any officers carrying out their duties under this chapter. So it just gives a, a little extra teeth if somebody's interfering with an alcohol inspection, whether it's an employee or a customer or that type of stuff. So any, and well, and one other note, uh, I, I'm not planning on coming to the next meeting. I fully intend that this is a first reading, that you don't waive this because obviously there's a lot here. So I don't think it, this is not your standard, oh, this, we're, we're modifying one section, please waive the second reading. Um, I fully intend this to be a comeback for a second reading, uh, unless I'm needed. I'm not planning on being at the next meeting, so please, if there's questions, reach out. If there's changes or, you know, you notice some typo because it's an entire chapter, reach out, um, or if you do need me back at the next meeting, let us know.
About any questions right now?
I do have a question.
Dana?
When the American Legion baseball season is going on, why can't we sell beer at the West Side Park?
I don't know.
I believe it has more to do with the fact that.
Premise?
Because it's on a park.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, we're like the only park that doesn't sell beer.
But they sell beer when the Hartford Hawks are playing. Has it got something to do with age perhaps? Legion is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure specifically why that is.
Okay.
That's a great question of Randy. Where were you fifteen minutes ago when he was here?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, we can check that specific one. It may be because they didn't apply for a license or I, I don't know. I, I haven't seen one that was denied for that, but I think.
I know, I know that you can't have, so if it's at West Side Park, that's one thing. If it's at the baseball diamonds near the high school, I know we can't.
That I know. That I completely know.
Um, but besides that, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
But I will check into it.
That's, uh, that's another one I'll note, um, that was a change. Um, thanks for inadvertently reminding me. Um, previous code prohibited anything at a school, uh, which is not necessarily what the statutes say. The current, the, what I have in there now is it basically says it, it's only granted with written approval of the school. I don't necessarily anticipate the public schools waiving that. They certainly could, but, uh, it's pretty standard to have the fish fry at St. Killian's or Holy Angels in West Bend to serve beer, so I don't want to prohibit something like that. So as long as it's that group applying for it, clearly they have waived the pro, you know, the prohibition of it happening on school property. So we can, we can grant a picnic license or for full-service retail. I mean, for example, I could see having a distillery come in with their mobile full-service retail for a fundraising event and having a whiskey tasting or something. I mean, there's a lot of flexibility with what can happen with these. Um, that obviously wouldn't be allowed downtown, but if you're in a building at St. Killian's, great, that, that's perfectly, the only requirement would, that one would come to council because it's hard alcohol.
What, and let me ask a quick question. Where do they normally hold that event? The American Legion?
West Side Park.
Yeah, West Side Park.
West Side Park. Okay, thank you.
I think it's an age thing. The Legion guys are.
I don't think so. I don't know.
The Legion boys are eighteen to twenty-one years old. When they hit like twenty-one and they go to the Hartford Hawks or the Osho or one of those other teams.
I've never seen beer sold over there.
So.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's places that sell at Little League events and stuff like that too. So I'm not sure specifically why it is, but we can check.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can ask Randy.
Good question.
Any other questions for Ian?
Just. Dean?
Yep. Is tobacco covered by this ordinance? I'm just wondering if somebody wanted to, uh, do a sale of cigars and they had a, an outdoor event where they had seven, eight different kinds of cigars.
There's separate regulations for that. Um, I haven't had that specific question come up.
And it may never come up.
Yeah, and, and on the list of things to deal with is, uh, there were some, actually the, the bill that this was attached to, to get it through was a vaping bill. So I have to, I have to review those and update the vaping ordinances. That's, you know, like the, the sale of vaping products at some point, but it's, it's on the list. This was more important because we already have our first one come through. Um, there's, there's been requests to sell at farmer's markets and stuff like that too, which is another consideration with the street use and this. Um, it, and, and, and for reference, at events like, you know, like a, a full-service retail outlet at a farmer's market could look like one of three different things. It could look like I'm selling my bottles of wine that I produce for, for you to take home. It could be that within my, the premises of my tent, I can serve you a glass of wine. You can drink it, you can go about your business af- you know, leave, leave the glass there. You can go then walk around, do the rest of your business at the farmer's market. Or, you know, if, if it was permitted, you could walk around the farmer's market with a glass of wine, you know? We just, we need those event permits to specify what are they looking to do and how are they going to regulate that? You know, obviously we probably aren't going to care that much if you're, if you're selling your bottles of wine to go take home a, as a product, just like you would olive oil or something like that. It's a little more, you know, it's a little bit bigger of an issue if you're serving wine in your tent, but then they're not open carrying. It's obviously a bigger thing if you're open carrying around a farmer's market or something. So.
Any other questions? Justin?
Yeah, this is a lawyerly comment. But, uh, in the first ordinance.
Yes.
Um, four, so, so four says an application for a street use permit shall be denied based on the factors set forth below, but then F says that the city clerk in consultation with the chief of police, city engineer, fire chief and EMS made to buy a permit for any other reason. I think that probably shouldn't be a factor. It should just be its own section.
Okay. Yeah, I can tweak that. I'll just add it to the first part.
Yeah.
Maybe denied in any factors below, or they may deny it for any factor that isn't enumerated. Yep.
All right. Any other questions for Ian?
Yeah, I do.
Old person pull up.
He's still here?
Yeah. Go ahead. Old person pull up.
It's been riveting, Justin. So, hey, Ian, thanks for all the hard work. I, I got a, I got a process question more so than anything because you're, you're going through this ordinance and, and, and everything dealing with, uh, this alcohol. What, what's the background that drives this initiative? Like, did something happen that we need to address this or is this standard routine as state code changes and then therefore we have to update our ordinances as well?
So, I mean, in an ideal world, it would be standard routine to revisit a chapter or two a year, just like, you know, the sidewalk program or city streets. Obviously there's not time to do that. Um, uh, but this one was specifically prompted by the full-service retail outlet, uh, changes, uh, because those needed to, the, the, the way the statutes read for those off-premise permits, we can only approve or deny them based on ordinances or based on condition or factors that are in our ordinances. Uh, and so that's why with the Aspen Sky one, it was you have to approve this because we don't have ordinances. Those ordinances are coming in the next meeting or two, but you have to approve this one. It's fine. Uh, so that's what prompted this was we needed these ordinances to be able to regulate those first full-service retail outlets. And then as I started dissecting that, it was just, it opened the can of worms and I had to, you know, it was like, it just needed, the whole thing needed to be redone. had to, you know, it was like, it just needed, the whole thing needed to be redone.
Okay, so we, we haven't changed this for a while then? Is that my understanding, Ian?
We, we've been adapting over time, so we've incorporated the changes that have come about. You know, there was the one where, or there was changes where the clerk could approve operators licenses. There's been changes throughout the years with outdoor serving areas and extensions of premise. Uh, the, the nude dancing ordinance was adopted, uh, maybe, I don't know, 10 or 15, 20 years ago. Um, but I think the base ordinance, we did, we did, we did a more, a slightly more in-depth restatement a few years ago, but I didn't, it wasn't a look at every single section. I think it was more about renumbering, which is why we did the restatement.
Also, last year we had a, a change to, for, for, um, beer and wine walks.
Yes.
We added that, that change. Um, again, we have, we just approved for, um, the change to an existing business, Brewd Omen, who will now start to, um, serve their own product. That, that had a change. So there's continual, uh, changes going on in, in the market to, to, uh, require, again, Ian, to go through our entire process and kind of get it up to speed, um, to what everyone else is offering.
Well, and a lot of the
Sorry.
A lot of those are small tweaks. This was a huge, huge like change that had been negotiated between the production industry, the tavern league. You know, there were a lot of stakeholders involved in this. Um, there's also, there's also big changes to the wedding barn, uh, regulations, um, where the wedding barns are now included in the definition of public place. That doesn't directly affect us, uh, because we don't have any operating wedding barns in the city. It, it does directly affect our businesses because if that ultimately goes through, there's going to be a lot, it, it's gonna, it's going to rebalance, I think, some of the event business, um, back to, you know, chandelier, shower center, cobblestone, et cetera, so that, that now you're going to licensed establishments instead of going to where you can just bring your own. Um, but that isn't a direct change that we, but there, that is in there. The no sale event venue is part of, you know, one of those changes. So, um, it, this was, this was one of those comprehensive changes that required, uh, you know, a, a lot of different pieces instead of just a little piecemeal change like they've made with, with past or, or past statute changes.
All right, thank you. I have nothing else.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Ian? All right, Ian, I have one thing. We're looking at ordinance 1496 and 1497. Can we combine them together for action?
I would just approve them separately.
Do them separately.
Yeah, do them separately.
No other questions? I'm going to look for a motion on ordinance number 1496. Keep in mind, this is a first reading. Somebody can move to suspend for a second reading, but we can treat it as a second reading and whatever you folks want to do. Tina, did you have your hand up?
Yep, so approve.
To approve, okay. Is there a second to approve the ordinance as presented?
You're approving the first reading of the
First, suspend the rules first. Yeah, right.
Yeah, there's no
If you want to suspend the rules, then you, you, you forego your second reading.
Yep.
And you approve tonight. But what you're doing tonight is the, the question of Tina is, are you approving for the first reading?
Right.
And then, or are you, are you requesting to suspend
Suspend the rules. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? If not, Tina, made a motion to
Approve.
Approve ordinance 1496. All the person Curly, is a second? Any further discussion? I'm waiting for Fullop, but there's no reply, so, okay. And if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 1496 is passed. All right, ordinance number 1497.
Still moved.
All the person Curly, second by all the person Webb. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Just a clarification to what was said. Uh, you are approving the ordinance for a first reading. You will bring this back to the council
Correct.
At the second one.
Yep.
Okay. Ian, thank you for your help. That was a good report tonight. Thank you. Item 12, City Administrator's Report. Steve?
Yeah, discussion and consideration of approving the assignment of development agreement and revised addendum. Um, Ian is here, I'll just, uh, lay it up for him. Basically, this is, has to do with the agreement that we had with TID number 10 regarding Rincon. Uh, as most of you are well aware, Rincon, uh, is for sale and they do have a buyer to it. With that development in which we had with Rincon, there is a, a, a TID payment, assistance payment that goes along with that. And so, uh, Ian has gone through it along with the attorney, uh, from Rincon regarding getting this kind of settled to, to be able to transfer to the new owner. And so I'll hand it over to Ian.
Yep. So, um, the assignment is pretty straightforward. Um, it basically assigns the, uh, terms of the developers agreement to the new, to the buyer's LLC, uh, and upon that sale terminates any responsibility of the seller. Um, the, basically the main things that that is focused on is the, there's a pilot, uh, so a payment in lieu of taxes, uh, that they make. If they're below, uh, it's around 195,000 in total tax payments for the property. So if the total tax payments are insufficient, they make a pilot payment. Um, and then after all the taxes are paid, including the pilot, uh, and that we then pay all of the development costs that we incurred, uh, and then we, uh, split the remaining increment into, and 50% is a pay-go, 50% is retained for other project costs. Um, and so this is assigning both the responsibility for the pay-go, or for the pilot and then the benefit of the pay-go to the new owner. Um, the, uh, new exhibit that we have, um, there were, uh, changes over time, um, that, uh, in, essentially this, it was a very weird, it was a very weird project for people who might have been involved with it. It was this weird combination agreement where we were, uh, we'd gone through all the public bidding and stuff, but we were working through the developers, uh, general contractor to do our brownfield remediation. Um, as part of that process, uh, the costs incurred by the city were more than had originally been anticipated. Um, this, a- and then there were other costs that we did not incur, like we, one of the project costs we'd intended to pay for was, uh, updating railroad crossings, which we ended up not doing. Um, and so what this, uh, revised addendum does is basically incorporate all of that in. So this now readjusts everything so that, uh, it's, you know, and by adopting it as the new addendum, it's now part of the agreement, so it's clear that these, these repayments are not going to be, it, it's not going to be in debate about what developer payments come off the top before we do the pay-go. Um, and so this is just fixing, kind of updating that, uh, from the original projection to what actually played out in the process. Um, I will note that, uh, the cash flow on this is part, you know, it's a, it's not a net, it's not a negative cash flow. Um, obviously there are the expenses that are paid off over the life of the TID, but they will be paid off over the life of the TID. Uh, the pay-go payment, uh, ends, uh, approximately like 2035. Obviously that depends on what the valuation and taxes are paid are, um, but it, it ends well before the end of the TID. Um, and then the TID as a whole, uh, has a positive cash flow and has since about the third or fourth year, uh, when all of the expenditure, it has a negative balance overall because of the money that was spent for acquisition of properties and all this stuff. Um, but that negative balance is being repaid and it will be, it is positive cash flow on a yearly basis and is repaying the general fund for those expenses that were incurred originally. So, and we're cleaning that up too, so that the next time we do the review for the border review, it's going to be a lot more clear what's happening with that, um, because the format that was being used previously didn't really show that as well in this complex of a TID. Works really well for the simpler TIDs out in the industrial park, but didn't work so well for this. So this cleans up this development. We've also cleaned up the other, the TID as a whole for the, for the accounting purposes moving forward, so.
Thank you, Ian. Any questions on that? It's complicated, but it's working.
And so normally when you do an assignment or like you, you approve an assignment, you are confident that the, uh, person who is assuming the, uh, agreement is, has sufficient pockets or resources to pay? Are we confident on that?
Yeah. Dominic, Dominic Ambroselli is, uh, one of the larger, like rental property owners, um, in the Milwaukee area. He has a lot of different units. Um, I did, for due diligence purposes, uh, reach out to several colleagues in Milwaukee and who had worked in Milwaukee from time to, or in the past, who dealt with the slumlords in Milwaukee and verified that Mr. Ambroselli is not one of them. Uh, and I mean frankly, you know, his, uh, working with his attorney on this was quite easy, so I'm not, I'm not concerned. He also owns, uh, I think the Ziegler Building in West Bend, uh, and so, uh, Jay Shambo had positive things to say as well. So I, uh, this isn't a, yeah, this isn't a means issue. He was really excited about the building. It's a beautiful building. It's a good, you know, good product for him moving forward. So I, I think this is a good, this, this will be, this is not going to be a bad, I hope, a bad step for the city.